It developed a few months ago, and at this time, prior to the meeting and while other voters are registering to come in, we've asked Dan LeBlanc, who is the Veterans Director for the Town of Free Town, who met with the Selectmen to initiate this display. I'd like to yield the floor to him. The display is over here, to my left, and as I mentioned, I'd like to yield the floor to him to give a brief description of this and the purpose and reason, if you don't know. Dan?
Thank you, Bruce. Everybody can hear me. I was told to be brief, so I'll try to be brief. What's in front of you is what's known as the Honor Chair. The Honor Chair is sponsored by a pussy seating company who made all the chairs that you find at Gillette Stadium and in the TD Garden. When I approached, I was approached by Rolling Thunder Massachusetts Chapter to establish a Honor Chair in our Town Hall, as were the 250 other Veterans Organizers in the state to do the same thing in their cities and town halls. When I saw the email, I thought it was a great idea. I posted the Selectman Matter Meeting back, I think, in April. They thought it was a great thing to do, and a couple of days later, it was in the newspaper. From that article in the newspaper, we raised over $2,000 for the Honor Chair. Because we raised so much money, we were able to do two Honor Chairs. We have, the chair you see here is the Portable Chair, and the attendant of the Portable Chairs is taken around to different venues, like schools and the communities, nursing homes, to present a chair and to explain to the chair to the children and to the nursing home folks what the chair is all about. The chair represents the 92,000 missing in action POWs from all wars that are still missing in action from the United States of America. The Permanent Chair is sitting right now at the VFW Hall in Free Town. The chair is mounted to a case, the chair is a stadium chair, it has number one on it with the POW M.I.A. logo on the back of it. The chair is mounted to a four-by-four foot stand. That chair will be dedicated on the 29th of June at the VFW when we have our Free Town Memorial Park poker run and pig roast dinner. On the 4th of July, that chair will be mounted on the police, the Free Town Police's ATV, and the back of the ATV, the Honor Chair with the flags, with the stanchions there you see it, will be escorted by the 96th Marine Corps League, the Captain 1399 out of New Bedford, by the VFW Post 6843 in Free Town, and by the Vietnam Veterans America, Captain 499 in New Bedford. All those Veterans Organizations will be marching immediately behind this chair, the Permanent Chair. Right now, there's about 12 chairs in the state. Like I said, the Lowell Spinners had a chair, the Gillette Stadium has a chair, TD Garden has a chair, and Fenway Park has a chair. These chairs are not to be sat on when, I'm sorry not flip-flopping because I'm trying to be fast. At the end of the 4th of July parade, we're going to take the chair and we're going to bring it into Town Hall, and it'll be permanently based in Town Hall on that platform and above the chair on the wall via plaque identifying those individuals in town. The $2,000 that I received was, it just went on. The chair, that chair costs $150, the other chair costs about $300. But all the rest of this stuff is what cost all money, the flags. But we were able to get two sets complete. And we have a couple of dollars left over to assist other communities that maybe wanted to do the same thing. The outpouring and the support that I received from our state delegation, those swatting in town, companies in town, individuals in town, was just overwhelming to me. I never expected it, and there are other communities in this, in the South Coast that are knowing it. Bayden, for example, just did it on Memorial Day. They have one folding chair, they're trying to get a second folding chair. You're talking $130, $150, we should. I'm just so proud to be a resident of Free Town, and the sloping ass that I bring in here and just talk a little bit about what it represents. I just want to thank everybody for giving me the five minutes, and I know that everyone gets out of this. Thank you, Bruce.
As soon as the remaining registered voters come in, we'll start our special Town Meet. It developed a few months ago, and at this time, prior to the meeting and while other voters are registering to come in, we've asked Dan LeBlanc, who is the Veterans Director for the Town of Free Town, who met with the Selectmen to initiate this display. I'd like to yield the floor to him. The display is over here, to my left, and as I mentioned, I'd like to yield the floor to him to give a brief description of this and the purpose and reason, if you don't know. Dan?
Thank you, Bruce. Everybody can hear me. I was told to be brief, so I'll try to be brief. What's in front of you is what's known as the Honor Chair. The Honor Chair is sponsored by a pussy seating company who made all the chairs that you find at Gillette Stadium and in the TD Garden. When I approached, I was approached by Rolling Thunder Massachusetts Chapter to establish a Honor Chair in our Town Hall, as were the 250 other Veterans Organizers in the state to do the same thing in their cities and town halls. When I saw the email, I thought it was a great idea. I posted the Selectman Matter Meeting back, I think, in April. They thought it was a great thing to do, and a couple of days later, it was in the newspaper. From that article in the newspaper, we raised over $2,000 for the Honor Chair. Because we raised so much money, we were able to do two Honor Chairs. We have, the chair you see here is the Portable Chair, and the attendant of the Portable Chairs is taken around to different venues, like schools and the communities, nursing homes, to present a chair and to explain to the chair to the children and to the nursing home folks what the chair is all about. The chair represents the 92,000 missing in action POWs from all wars that are still missing in action from the United States of America. The Permanent Chair is sitting right now at the VFW Hall in Free Town. The chair is mounted to a case, the chair is a stadium chair, it has number one on it with the POW M.I.A. logo on the back of it. The chair is mounted to a four-by-four foot stand. That chair will be dedicated on the 29th of June at the VFW when we have our Free Town Memorial Park poker run and pig roast dinner. On the 4th of July, that chair will be mounted on the police, the Free Town Police's ATV, and the back of the ATV, the Honor Chair with the flags, with the stanchions there you see it, will be escorted by the 96th Marine Corps League, the Captain 1399 out of New Bedford, by the VFW Post 6843 in Free Town, and by the Vietnam Veterans America, Captain 499 in New Bedford. All those Veterans Organizations will be marching immediately behind this chair, the Permanent Chair. Right now, there's about 12 chairs in the state. Like I said, the Lowell Spinners had a chair, the Gillette Stadium has a chair, TD Garden has a chair, and Fenway Park has a chair. These chairs are not to be sat on when, I'm sorry not flip-flopping because I'm trying to be fast. At the end of the 4th of July parade, we're going to take the chair and we're going to bring it into Town Hall, and it'll be permanently based in Town Hall on that platform and above the chair on the wall via plaque identifying those individuals in town. The $2,000 that I received was, it just went on. The chair, that chair costs $150, the other chair costs about $300. But all the rest of this stuff is what cost all money, the flags. But we were able to get two sets complete. And we have a couple of dollars left over to assist other communities that maybe wanted to do the same thing. The outpouring and the support that I received from our state delegation, those swatting in town, companies in town, individuals in town, was just overwhelming to me. I never expected it, and there are other communities in this, in this, in the South Coast that are knowing it. Bayden, for example, just did it on Memorial Day. They have one folding chair, they're trying to get a second folding chair. You're talking $130, $150, we should. I'm just so proud to be a resident of Free Town, and the sloping ass that I bring in here and just talk a little bit about what it represents. I just want to thank everybody for giving me the five minutes, and I know that everyone gets out of this. Thank you, Bruce.
As soon as the remaining registered voters come in, we'll start our special Town Meet.
I've been chairman since, for four years now. I apparently drew up a short straw when my first got elected to the board, and I became the chairman. I can tell you that we had, when I first became chairman of the Soil Board, not long after Cape Cod Aggregate, which is the company that has the quarry, I had to come in for a permit. We held public hearings that we were not even required to hold because of the concerns of a handful of residents. When I say a handful of residents, I'm talking about 15, 16 residents. We held those hearings, and we listened, we had our own study done, and we listened to the company's presentations, and finally, we gave Cape Cod Aggregate a one-year permit to continue their operation. We did that after putting, I'm thinking from memory, about 20 to 22 conditions on their operation. We reviewed the history that provided by town reports by the state, and we can assure you that Cape Cod Aggregate, the company that's in question here that's running the quarry, has never even come close to violating any of the state restrictions, town restrictions. Any one of us can go down there from the Board of Health or the Soil Board at any time, walk right in and say, hey, we want to talk, and go right down to the center of the quarry. Well, Cape Cod Aggregate operated for a year, and then their permit came to again. And again, we had the same people come forward, and again, we had heroes, and again, we listened. We went back and we checked blasting records to see if there was any violation. And as we got close to giving them a permit, a permit that they had asked for under our bylaws for three years, there was an allegation by a couple of people saying that they were well-swept tainted with perchlorine. Now, perchlorine is a residue from blasting. It's also a residue from common bleach. So these individuals went to the Department of Environmental Protection, Mass Environmental Protection, and the Massachusetts Environmental Protection contacted the town and said they would like to sample wells. So we agreed, let the sampling begin, and we would not issue a permit, we would not honor a renewal of the permit until the testing was done. And DEP tested a number of wells, and they came back and they found one well that had a small amount of perchlorine. So they did another test, and they found out that perchlorine had diminished, it was a very small amount. Come to find out that that particular household had a swimming pool, and they were using chlorine, and when they backwashed the pump, the chlorine was going into the soil. That was the only finding. So we continued our hearing, and Mass DEP came out and did pretty much an hour presentation, the results of their testing, and they found absolutely no connection between the operation at CCA and anybody's complaints. Those are the facts. We issued CCA a three-year permit with, I believe it's 27, conditions that they have to meet, and CCA meets those conditions. They bring in their testing from independent laboratories. This company does a great job. It would be a travesty to let this company go by the boards. This company is not hurting anybody, and we as the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, we as the Soil Board, our concern is to take care of the health and welfare of our residents. They come first, they come before any company. But I can sit up here and tell you, I have no reservations making these statements because CCA is a good operator, they abide by all the requirements, and they never hesitate to let us come down and check things out.
I just want to clarify one thing, okay? I know, I know that basically, this, all this article was presented because of, the situation is going on now, but in no way and no fashion that this is a public hearing on any particular company in this town. This article is presented to the taxpayers and residents of this town as an article on its own. I realize that the company in question that did make it to this board is why this is here, but keep in mind, this is not a public hearing for any particular company in no way, fat, our fashion, okay? So if you keep your comments based on the article, that would be appreciated, okay? Okay, I'm going to go into the discussion end of it now, okay? And as I mentioned earlier, what I will do is limit three minutes per individual. We've read from the opponent of the sponsor of the article, we've read from the Soil Board, so anyone who wants a discussion, please come to the mic, mention your name and your residence, and we will start the three-minute process.
Through the moderator, I just want to make a clarification that the Soil Board does not recommend this article as well.
Okay, my name is Ted Quinn. I've been a resident of Free Town since 1981, and I want to thank the Selectmen and elected officials here tonight, and also all the residents that showed up here tonight to attend this very important meeting. This meeting allows me to express my concerns and also some of my neighbors' concerns about the operation of the quarry in a residential neighborhood. We have obtained close to 225 signatures to get these articles for this special Town Meet. Article one is to protect the drinking water from the groundwater. This proposed bylaw... This proposed bylaw is protecting groundwater and was deemed necessary by some Free Town citizens when approximately seven wells in the neighborhood went dry, all about the same time. Homeowners had to pay out of their own pocket $10,000 or more to have new wells drilled. The wells did not spatter dry as they might if the water supply was simply running low, but all went suddenly dry immediately after a blast at a nearby quarry. The blast may have closed off the underground rock fissures that were feeding these wells. Some of my neighbors and friends also complained about sedimentation in their water and cracks in their foundation. This proposed bylaw would prevent blasting below the average mean water line. This means that blasting that could seriously impact the water table, which supplies drinking water to groundwater, would be prevented in order to protect the groundwater level. It would have no effect on blasting above the mean water line. This law has already been passed in Berkeley and was approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General. This bylaw was written by an environmental engineer and reviewed by an attorney. The United Nations considers access to clean drinking water to be, to be a basic human right. Please protect the rights of homeowners, please protect our drinking water. Do the right thing and vote yes for Article One. Thank you very much.
Jean Fox, 11 Jeffrey Lane. This is a far cry from an article of common sense. This bylaw adds another layer of regulatory restriction on what is already a heavily regulated industry. As mentioned by Mr. Sadek, the permit allows us to shut down this operation with a phone call. With any infraction, a phone call shuts it down. In addition, DEP, as also mentioned by Mr. Sadek, has weighed in and weighed in extraordinarily favorably on this operation. We also have federal oversight of quarries in general. This is very extensive and highly regulated. Under the current permit, we have, again, the ability to shut down, no infractions to date. In effect, because it's a transparent process, because these documents are on record and available to anyone to review at any time, there's absolutely no reason to call this common sense. And regarding the wells, I would like to point out that I see no evidence of wells dried up due to the quarry. I saw in Town Hall, one well permit pulled, and that resident did not act on that permit. We had that year, when all of these wells allegedly went dry, no snow melt and very little precept. Wells typically run dry in the summer in Free Town anyway, I can attest to that personally. And finally, look at what you are receiving or what you tend to lose if you vote in favor of this. $600,000 in revenue, folks. $600,000 in tipping fees, taxes, and permitting fees. You lose a lot of philanthropic support in this community that we would not be able to support. And finally, this is again, as the moderator said, not a public hearing for the planning board, but we have heard from the Soil Board, and at this point, I was wondering if it would be possible to ask other members of our public safety team to address the record and to address what this language could mean in terms of their experience with the quarries in town? If it would be possible to ask the police chief and the fire chief?
Okay, we'll come forward, they can come forward, Bruce.
I don't see, oh, I see, please fill here.
Yeah, just one, I want to...
I'm in support of the operation.
Name of the resident?
Governor Q Aschur. Governor Aschur, we had a water problem there. All of our wells were polluted, we had orange and brown substances coming out that was called water. God, thank God, we had a water line put in down there, and it was pleasant to take a shower and wash clothes, okay? And I would think that we would be forward-looking and start thinking about getting water lines down to the parts of town where they have this problem, as opposed to shutting down operations, as Jean said, that brings us in a whole lot of cash that we always need to run this town. I've seen four or five times since I've been here where operations were standing right from the get-go because of people's concerns that always proved not to be the real thing. And I've seen these operations move to other places. We're known famously as the no-town, no business, no industries, no income, and we just can't rely on tax money anymore. We need, I'm talking about individual homeowner taxes, and we need the business taxes, and we don't need to be pushing them out of town. Thank you.
Lee Longbourn, Dr. Really Rude, as a resident. Everybody should sit here and think long and hard about this article. We work very hard in this town for track business, and in a heartbeat, we put to the slam everything we've been working so hard for years to accomplish. ICE Corps, CCA, they do everything humanly possible to be a good neighbor. They break no laws, they go through the permitting process, they're studied over and over and over again, always, the results are good after the studies. My understanding, if there wasn't drywall, we also had a flood here and a dam burst, and people's wells might have gone dry because flood, Ford's bomb disappeared. Well, how about that? And I'll tell you why, as a resident, I want you to do me a favor. Raise your hand if you think you pay enough taxes. Now, raise your hand if you think you want to pay more. Right. Let's smarten up here. I'm with the CCA, and I applaud it. Karen, still we have the fire chief. Does anybody have any questions as regards to the blast event and how I deal with the blast?
Please come to the mic if you do.
Yes, the... Actually, we just ran down some quick stats for you. Since 2009, we had 138 blasts in the town of Free Town. Of those, 105 were at the CCA quarry, 28 were at Route 24, and five were in other businesses and residents. We received a total of 13 formal complaints due to approximately grossing up his station, showing not a form of oath, and it is investigated by an insurance company. None of those have actually panned out to be any actual damage to the blasted. We also received 62 verbal complaints. Now, these range anywhere from shaking of the house to even, we have some residents calling complaining about the actual noise of the quarries, conveyor belts, but the stack of alarms on, on. We document any complaint comes through the fire station. As far as the blast of, we deal with basically three blasts in town. We had one at the quarry, it went since back in 2012. We had a flylock incident, and basically, it needs the flylock full in the outside the 50-foot perimeter for the blast area. None of the rocks left the actual quarry, but because it's the one where the boreholes were, we had to shut them down. The fortunately, fire marshal, he had to do a plan how to fix, meant to happen again, which he did, and we re-estate his permit. Are there any questions?
There are rocks.
We have something like... There are rocks today, they're element-sized, though. Some could be this big, some could be, you know, small pellets.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Jerry Lohr. I live in One Little Avenue in Assonne. Mr. Sadek, I'm the one with the well that supposedly went down in perchlorine. I do not have a swimming pool, never have. I don't know where you got that information from. My drinking water is completely chlorine. I've never used chlorine in my washing or anything, never. We don't use that, because I know it can go into a well.
He adjusted, one please adjust.
I have never used chlorine, bleach to wash our clothes, and I do not have a swimming pool. Where Mr. Sadek got that information, I had no idea, but like the police chief that I'm the fire chief. After the first, when they have a blast, my house shakes, it's like a, it shakes every time they have a blast, depending on how decisive the blast is, it shakes. I went to the, I filed a complaint in the fire department. After a couple of years, I ended up with a crack in the corner of my house. I've been in the town now for about 44 years. I made a claim to the insurance company. Their, CCA's insurance company comes to my house, makes a claim. The claim ends up denied. I know, I mean, all you got to do is figure it out, and after your house shakes so many times, you're going to end up with cracks in your house. That's all it is.
My name is Captain Pacheco, and I reside at 10 Beach Road in Assonne, and I'm about a quarter of a mile from Cape Cod Aggregate with their blasting. And I am one of the poorest, sorry souls that isn't represented by my selectmen, the handful of people that have damaged your house, so I hope the rest of you don't have to experience that. that, because if you are, if you're in that little handful of people, you're not going to be represented in. Who here wants to buy a new house? Who here wants to replace the foundation? Who here wants to buy a new well? I mean, sorry that you only had 15 people, you know, complaining about this. And I'm sorry when you said that Cape Cod Aggregates has not violated anything, because it's not about...
They're not speaking on, really, speaking on the...
Well, the effect was the water on my house, my house, my water.
Speaking about Cape Cod Aggregates and how brave a company it is.
Absolutely, sure, he wants them in.
This is not, this is not, this is what I said earlier, I didn't want this to become a public hearing. And it's not gonna be a public hearing, okay?
So either way, I went to a Soil Board meeting in the spring of 2012, and Cape Cod Aggregates admitted to violating the permit. They were allowed to continue with their permit, and they were allowed to renew the permit, and I just wanted to know why.
Well, you're not gonna, fortunately, like I said, this is not a public hearing. If you want to discuss the article, the merit on the warrant article, that's fine, but I don't think we're gonna be looking for an answer, yeah, why they did not respond to you. So if you want to thank me for your comments and...
Congressman Edes, a resident of Freetown for the past 70-plus years. Three Sandy's Lane, also an employer of several people from the town of Freetown and the surrounding areas. Article one is not a good article for my business, not a good article for any business, not a good article for future economic development in Freetown. Freetown has existing bylaws in place which serve the town well. Raw materials are major ingredients for economic development, help fill our roads, bridges, homes, drives, many other items people don't think about. Your consideration for both this article would be appreciated.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Gilbert Paderas. I live at 85 Richmond Road in Assonet. And the effect on me is just simply, you know, I have to adjust the clocks and the pitches, because at 3.7 miles away, I feel it during the week when they walk. It's not gonna kill me. But if I was trying to sell my house, that might be a problem. If they heard it, they saw it, things jiggling around. And you can feel it, it's definitely felt. But that's not the issue. The true issue here is, Mr. Sadek, you're saying that they need all the requirements. And I, that may be true. It may be 15 to 20 years, or 60 years before it affects you, either what the toxins that may be in there, you don't know. You're doing the best you can under the regulations that you have currently, and perhaps this excavating company is doing by the law. Well, you know, you know that just because they're doing it by the regulations of today, that that doesn't prevent the results unintended from happening many years from now. I know my house, the value of my house, and the surrounding houses. Now, you probably don't care about my house, because I happen to be in the section where the business is. However, someday, you may care about your house if they locate something like this. This protects you. You don't see it, you don't care, but this actually does protect the people here from unintended causes. We're not casting assertions on the regulations, but this will protect you someday, and if you want to sell your house, you may have something like this very close. So you can sell your soul for the $600,000. You can do that, but somewhere down the line, your children face a dad, mom, what the hell are you thinking?
My name is David Tenny from 5 Brian Street. I actually share the street address with their company in Freetown. I am the closest well and the closest resident in town to what's going on. My foundation is perfect, my well is perfect, these people are wonderful neighbors, nobody here is closer than me, nobody. I live on top of this, and there is absolutely no problem. These people are wonderful.
Denise Lamro, I live at 310th Street in Assonet. And I'd just like to remind people that sometimes we can become irrational and very emotional. Not that long ago, there was the fly ash issue. And we got very riled up at town meeting, and we decided to close that down. And because we did that, we got fined. And our taxes went up, and we've all paid for that. So please, listen long and hard and not vote just emotionally, please vote rationally.
Tom Lee, number one, Brian Street. CCA brought a company in called Seismic Solutions. They filmed every square inch of my foundation, my ceilings, my walls, my garage, my basement, to confirm that there's no cracks. And if there was cracks that occurred later on, you couldn't deny it, you know what I mean? And I was able to use that video for my home or as a trust, for my own benefit. And to be honest with you, my well, it's 75 feet, is actually tasting less tin. These people have been great, and live less than 3,000 feet away from the quarry.
Good evening. Deborah Perry, 25 Centura. I just want to say, this article is really put on there to shut down CCA. And I think we all need to look at this, if we close CCA, what a great neighbor they have been. My daughter plays softball, they donate to softball fields, and they help the youth association. The fireworks in town, we might not have without CCA. This is, you say it's about the article, but this article will shut CCA down, and it is directed just for that purpose.
Thank you. I want to keep that, you know, it's not public hearing, I'm telling you.
Yeah, it's a not, you need to vote no on this article. It also affects other businesses in the town. I'm a developer, I built many, many houses in this town, and I have wells go dry, long before CCA started blasting. Wells go dry, that does happen sometimes. It is a consequence of the earth and the water that moves below, and sometimes you have to make it real well. You cannot say that it's because of CCA. Because that quarry was a gravel operation 40 years prior to this meeting, and they're wonderful, they've got a wonderful ground there, and they're being safer than...
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who's second? Come to the mic. No, I'm not, listen, I said in the beginning, I will allow everyone who has not spoken to be able to speak before anyone who would like to speak a second time. She has three minutes to speak, just like everyone else. Now, let's wait.
Hi, my name is Nancy Castro. I reside at 15 Daco Drive in Assonet. I'm here today, I think the board, for hearing my testimony today. I actually am one who's been directly affected by the blasting. I sent a letter dated April 22nd, 2013, to the Soil Board, and I also met with the fire department, because I have two wells in my property that went dry, both. The beginning of July, July 9th, actually, 2012, and then two weeks later, my second well went dry. And it was in, like, trickling, like, it just, you have water in one minute, and then you heard the pipes gurgling, and it didn't have water anymore. Exactly what I have a resident type, you know, describe. So I just wanted to inform people that I am a concerned resident. I was directly affected by the blasting, I believe, in my opinion. We have owned and resided in our homes since 2002, and never before experienced any issues with water supply. Our house was built in 1980s, most of the ones is the development, we were built in that time period. We never had water issues.
Did you kind of get to the article in any time?
Yes, yes, I can. So basically, the wells are an issue in my regard. And if it's going to affect water supply, then I'm voting yes. I believe that I was directly a victim of it by the blasting, and I encourage everybody here to think about their water supply. It's very, a very important thing for all of us, because we do not have piped-in water. We feed our children with water, we need it to cook, to clean our house, wash our clothes.
Judith Kepa, Ada Manero. I'd like to respond to some of the comments, Mr. Moderator, that we heard today. First, we heard that excavators who had been working below the water line never violated conditions of their permit. That's fact, that they did violate those conditions. And the Soil Conservation Board, by court order, taped the hearings where the Cape Cod, the particular excavator, stated clearly that they violated not one, not two, not three, but 10 conditions of their permit. And not for one year, not for two years, not for three years, not for four years, but for five years. And this was just an oversight of the Soil Conservation Board in their overseeing of the permits that allowed any excavators in Freetown. Now, the fact is, until 2013, all of the permits that I've seen that allowed excavation in Freetown required this article. This is not a new article to Freetown. This is something the Soil Board of our town has sanctioned in the permit for the company that we seem to talk about today. So this is nothing new. It's a protective covenant for all of our wells, not only in Assonet, but in East Freetown. We need to think about what we're doing to our ground and how it affects our water, because, as you heard tonight, it's affecting our water, and it's only a matter of time when it affects your water, because there are no laws that keep excavators out of your areas. So I hope you can vote yes to support all of Freetown, to support your home values, because devaluation of property is gonna be the next thing that lowers our tax base and maybe raises yours.
My name's Chris Malver. I reside in the remainder of Road as well.
Please speak, you don't want to speak it up a little bit more in the mic room?
How about that? There we go. Okay. I've had none of the issues that many people are mentioning, as far as well running dry or anything like that.
Can't hear you.
Okay. Let me move the mic up.
Speak loudly, I'll write into the mic. Thank you.
Okay. And move the camera, hopefully. I just want to supplement two comments that people made relating to the article, and beginning that I will be recommending a vote for no on the article. The first point goes back to the fly ash reference of the $2 million that, as a town, we still pay $200,000 a year. I don't want to see us get into that financial liability if we were to vote yes, that would open the door for the same type of liability. Secondly, I believe that Cape Cod Aggregates runs a very legitimate business, and they are in compliance with all local and state regulations. So again, I think that we should vote no to support local business. I think, you know, as a business owner also, it's with adversity, we have many of the local businesses. So it is about the business. And then the last piece, in terms of wells is concerned, wells do run, there is no conclusive evidence that identifies any blasting or excavation from Cape Cod or any other activity that says that that is the reason why the wells went dry. It's unfortunate that they went dry, but it does happen, and it's the town that we live in. Thank you.
Okay, no more, hearing no more discussion, we will now move to vote. At this time, we're gonna raise your...
Double, right?
Will the council please come forward? We need a majority vote. All in favor of this article, please raise your yellow vote. We have 76 for the article, 242 opposing the article, motion is defeated. Okay, we're to Article 2. See if the town will vote to amend. Article 6, Section 6.2, removal of roof curvils by adding new subsection D. adding new subsection D. B, no permits shall be issued if any of the following conditions exist and cannot be rectified through the use of regional conditions as provided by Section 6.4 to the satisfaction of the Soil Conservation Board. A, one, any vehicular traffic of any type of quantity so as to adversely affect the immediate neighborhood. Any conditions dangerous to the premises and residents in the neighborhood through fire, explosion, emission of waste, or other causes. Any creation of noise, vibration, dust, heat, smoke, fumes, odor, glare, or other nuisances or serious hazards such as to adversely affect the immediate neighborhood. The Soil Board Commission, Soil Conservation Board will ensure enforcement of all permit conditions and will collect any penalties thereon for player or permit holders to abide by any permit conditions. The Soil Conservation Board will ensure timely and proper due diligence in handling any such matters and to relabel existing reference Article Six, Section 6.2, Subsection A, denial to remove, and Subsection C. Denial to remove, this was submitted by a petition, requires a majority vote and board of selectmen recommendation.
The board of selectmen does not recommend.
Finance Committee recommendation.
No recommendation on this.
But hear a motion.
Motion seconded.
Say, please second it.
She motion to accept is read and seconded.
Please, who made a motion to second, please second it. Seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to accept the article is read. On the question, I'm sorry, before I do that, the submitter of the petition, would you have some comments?
Article Two is not new to Freetown. Our general laws currently reference similar language. However, it's unclear if the nuisance protection applies to soil conservation laws. These bylaws are in a special section of Freetown law. Article Two is very simple. It clarifies that nuisance protection applies to the special section of our laws, section that cover the soil conservation laws. This article is also a common sense article. It affords everyone the right to seek out our officials when anyone, anywhere, has a problem in our neighborhoods as described. There's absolutely nothing controversial about this protection. This article makes clear that these laws are unambiguous and that they apply to the Soil Conservation Law section of Freetown.
Is there anyone from the Soil Conservation Board who could comment on this article? Lee Blomgartner, Dr. Brin wrote.
Hey, you just want to hang on a second, I want to get comment from the Soil Conservation Board, okay? Thank you.
The Soil Board does not recommend this article. State law already has, already gives boards of selectmen the power to enforce noise and trades. This would be a duplicate of that law, and it would be just another way for people that would distraught with an organization to come forward and take us through litigation again. The law, the state law, already protects us, protects the people through the noise and trade statute.
Lee Blomgartner, eighty-seven, Dr. Brin wrote, just to make this comment. People in here have said a lot of things, but it's very apparent to me that a lot of people in this room may find the truth interesting. It's not relevant to anything that they say.
As Mr. Stenig has pointed out, we are covered on noise. We also know that we, this is another article targeting a specific entity. We also know that in the seventies and eighties upwards of a hundred trucks a day exited the same facility, and there was never a problem. We also know that on this same facility, we now have a truck wash, we have a contact list, so that if schools are getting out early, the trucks don't run. If there has ever been an issue with a truck, that was immediately brought to the attention of this entity that is targeted in this particular bylaw, and it was addressed concretely, many of those complaints were found in the other trucking agencies.
Any other discussion?
Ted Quinnigan, fifteen-minute adieu. Article Two is intended to strengthen nuisance portion of the Soil Conservation Board bylaws. This proposed bylaw has been reviewed by an attorney, and the nuisance bylaw strengthens the rights of citizens on issues and concerns regarding dust, vibration, like the house shaking after every blast, noise from glass, and other nuisances caused by commercial excavation that infringe on a homeowner's ability to enjoy their own property. Actually, this bylaw already exists in the Freetown Soil Conservation bylaws, but not enforced by the Freetown Soil Conservation Board. It makes you wonder, what are they doing? This bylaw would strengthen homeowners' rights on this issue. Anyway, from what I can see, we're not all a bunch of lies up here. Do the right thing, please protect the right owners, the homeowners, and vote yes for Article Two. I'll remember next time, I'm voting for you.
My name is Tim Puma, I live at the... I have children, they attend middle school, and on May twenty-second, there was a blast at eleven forty-seven, and there was also a half day of school, and the bus was going right by that property. So, I'm not sure how well this article addresses that, but just to know that there are times when, I know that they're not supposed to blast at that when the middle school gets out or any of the schools get out a half day, and it's not always the case.
We talk about a common sense, you need to look at this article. It talks about any creation of a noise. Oh my God, that encompasses, I don't know, I couldn't mow my grass, is that violating this? I think you need to really look at it, and there are already these ordinances in town bylaws, you need to look at them, they're already in place. This would just innovate businesses and people with more regulations. I don't know, we're getting like further towards communism involved in the rules and regulations here. I think you need to look at this, it's just more regulations. I think you're bothering.
Thank you. Any other other discussions? Seeing none, I'll take it to a vote, we'll do the same thing, submitted by a petition. Pardon? Would you like to say a few words, or three minutes, like anyone else? Please bear with us, give it a courtesy, please. Please.
First, this protection is, it is in the bylaws, but we want to put it in another section of the bylaw to strengthen the interpretation of its applicability. You were mentioning that we're commies, if we're commies about this, then we should remove it from the other section of our bylaws. And if we wanted to listen to our selectmen today, we should move, remove it from our bylaws altogether. But there's a reason it's there, it's to protect you. And if you can't protect yourself, then, you know, I don't know what to say to you. But this is un, it's not controversial, and yet you seem not interested in it, so it's unfortunate.
Okay, no other discussion, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor, please raise your yellow voting votes. All who oppose to the article, please raise your yellow votes. We will be continuing discussion, our meeting, so please, come forward. Then we have the A-Room, our meeting, forward. We have thirty-seven for the motion, the article, and two hundred and twenty-seven against the article. Article Two is defeated. Okay, if anyone, we give you thirty seconds for those of you who want to leave, we still want to continue the meeting, so please, if you choose to leave, please do so now. Thank you. And still have a considerable amount of business to take care of. Okay, let's continue the special town meeting. Okay, we're going into Article Three. See if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of $1,395 and no cents representing a town share of a NCR volunteer fire assistance program grant to purchase six new models with mounting brackets for the fire department and or take any action relative thereto. It's submitted by the fire chief, requires a majority vote. Finance, board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend.
Again, I want to remind you, it's from free cash. They have a motion on the floor, seconded to accept Article Three. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Three is approved.
Mr. Moderator, I have moved to waive the reading of Article Four. Second.
motion made and seconded to waive the article, waive the reading of Article Four. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Okay, Article Four. I'm going to read the first section anyways. See if the town will vote to transfer previously adopted amounts from various old department fund numbers to new department fund numbers and also to divide personnel and expense line items listed below and/or take any action relative thereto. And as the motion was to waive the reading of that information submitted by the town administrator, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
No recommendation on this. Votes adopt the article is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Five is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, declare, declare Article Six voter unanimous. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of $100,000 to begin funding the town's other post employment, retirement, benefit trust fund and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the town administrator, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Seven is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, declare, declare Article Six voter unanimous. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of $100,000 to begin funding the town's other post employment, retirement, benefit trust fund and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the town administrator, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Seven is read. On the question? Any other question?
All critical, thirteen, ten, twelve, wait. Can someone explain what other post employment retirement benefit is? Never in whole tab.
The town pays a portion of retiree healthcare costs from the time that they retire from service with the town till they're eligible for full retirement Medicaid, Medicare, and this establishes a fund to start paying those costs from. We've been paying from them, we've been paying them from current operating funds, this is a, establishes and funds the trust, the interest would eventually be used to pay for the expenses. It's a recommendation that has been in our last two audit reports.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is approved. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to amend Article Ten of the town bylaws, personnel classification and compensation plan, Section Eight, positions by adding border health agent to the list of positions contained therein and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Nine is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is approved. Article Nine, see if the town will vote to amend Article Ten of the town bylaws, personnel classification and compensation plan, Section Eight, positions by adding border health agent to the list of positions contained therein and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Nine is read. On the question?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Four is adopted. Article Five, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $2,000 from the sale of cemetery lots account to be used by the cemetery commission to make available more cemetery lots in the Assot area grounds. This will include surveying of the distant prepared land, marking out lots, clearing new areas in land already owned, performing maintenance, and improving roads and access and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the cemetery commission, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Five is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Article Six, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of $35,781 and fifty-one cents to pay outstanding bills of previous, prior fiscal year and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a nine, ten vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Seven is read. On the question? Any other question?
All critical, thirteen, ten, twelve, wait. Can someone explain what other post employment retirement benefit is? Never in whole tab.
The town pays a portion of retiree healthcare costs from the time that they retire from service with the town till they're eligible for full retirement Medicaid, Medicare, and this establishes a fund to start paying those costs from. We've been paying from them, we've been paying them from current operating funds, this is a, establishes and funds the trust, the interest would eventually be used to pay for the expenses. It's a recommendation that has been in our last two audit reports.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is approved. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to amend Article Ten of the town bylaws, personnel classification and compensation plan, Section Eight, positions by adding border health agent to the list of positions contained therein and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Eight is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is approved as adopted. Article Nine, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to deposit in a stabilization fund and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Eight is read. On the question? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is approved as adopted. Article Nine, see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to deposit in a stabilization fund and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Nine is read. On the question? Any other question?
All critical, thirteen, ten, twelve, wait. Can someone explain what other post employment retirement benefit is? Never in whole tab.
The town pays a portion of retiree healthcare costs from the time that they retire from service with the town till they're eligible for full retirement Medicaid, Medicare, and this establishes a fund to start paying those costs from. We've been paying from them, we've been paying them from current operating funds, this is a, establishes and funds the trust, the interest would eventually be used to pay for the expenses. It's a recommendation that has been in our last two audit reports.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is approved. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to amend Article Ten of the town bylaws, personnel classification and compensation plan, Section Eight, positions by adding border health agent to the list of positions contained therein and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommend. Votes adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Nine is read. On the question? Any other question?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Article Nine is adopted as...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, I, this time I declare Article Nine unanimous. I'm sorry.
from service with the town till they're eligible for, uh, full retirement Medicaid, Medicare. And this establishes a fund to start paying those costs from. We've been paying from them, we've been paying them from current operating funds. Uh, this is a, establishes and funds the trust, uh, the interest would eventually be used to pay for the expenses. It's a recommendation that has been, uh, in our last two audit reports.
Is there any other discussion? Every none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is adopted. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to amend Article Ten of the town bylaws, personnel classification and compensation plan, Section Eight, positions by adding border health agent to the list of positions contained therein and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Motion to adopt is read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Eight is read. On the question? Every none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article is approved as adopted. Article Nine, you see, the town will vote to raise inappropriate and or transfer from available funds a sum of money to deposit in the stabilization fund and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a two-thirds vote. Think it'd be a sum here.
Six hundred and ninety thousand.
Six hundred and ninety thousand. Board of Selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Nine with six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Article Nine is adopted as...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, I, uh, this time I declare Article Nine unanimous. Uh, I'm sorry, two-thirds vote, two-thirds vote. You're welcome. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn the special town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Stick around, we have the annual town meeting coming up. We're gonna start that, we'll give you five minutes, and then we will begin the, begin the, uh, meeting. One being present for his annual town meeting, the meeting will now come to water. The form for our annual town meeting is fifty, and we do have fifty. I will call upon the town clerk to read the return of the published warrant.
Warrant for the annual town meeting. To either of the constables of the town of Free Town greeting, in the name of the common law, you are hereby requested to notify one of the inhabitants of the town of Free Town who are qualified to vote in elections in town affairs to meet in the Free Town Elementary School Auditorium, forty-three Boulevard, Free Town, Massachusetts, on Monday, the sixteenth day of June, two thousand fourteen, at seven-thirty PM, then and there to act on the following articles. You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting a test of copies thereof at the following places, Asona Post Office, East Free Town Post Office, the stores of Cook Picknickings Free Town, Junior's Convenience Store in Free Town Town Hall, and the Free Town Communications Center. Hereof, they are not making sure of the original warrant with your due ones thereof, immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Free Town, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Free Town, this twenty-seventh day of May, Ann O'Dominant, two thousand and fourteen, signed by the Free Town Board of Selectmen. To the town clerk, town of Free Town, Massachusetts, May twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, I have this day posted test copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein, signed Carlton E. Abbott, Junior, Honsville. So I'd just like to say that on this reading, you're using the blue tickets if we count, and not the yellow, so make sure you got good meat tickets ready. And also, this meeting also is being recorded.
All funding from the special, uh, for the annual town meeting will come through taxation unless otherwise specified. The Article One comes with the, uh, on the budget, which I'll read as soon as I finish the article. Article One, you see, the town will vote to raise inappropriate and or transfer from such funds, such sums of money as may be necessary to pay the town charges for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. General Government, Town Reports, Planning Board, Finance Committee, Board of Appeals, for protection of persons and property, for health and sanitation, for highways, for libraries, for veterans' benefits, the cemeteries, town parks, interest in principal and school loans, conservation commission, historical commission, and classified tax titles, reserve fund, Crystal County Retirement, incidental, cultural conservation, council on aging, raised registration officer, cultural council, capital equipment, capital building improvement, and insurance, and or take any action relative thereto. Submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote. I am going to read the Article One on this budget. The Board of Selectmen's recommendation and the Finance Committee are the same. If anyone wants to put a hold on any one of these items, please say so, and we will come back to it after I get done with the, with this budget. Town meeting, moderator, four hundred and thirteen. Selectmen, seven hundred, I'm sorry, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven. Town Administrator, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen.
Hold.
Finance Committee, one thousand. Reserve Fund, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Town Accounting Auditor, one hundred and seven thousand, five thirty-six. Audit, twenty thousand. Assessors, eighty-seven thousand, nine thirty-eight. Um, Treasurer Collector, one hundred seventy-one thousand, eighty-three. Management Info Systems, I'm sorry, uh, Law Department and Town Council, you forget that one, right? Forty-five thousand. Management Info Systems, eighty-five thousand. Tax Title Foreclosure, six thousand, five hundred. Town Clerk, ninety-two thousand, six, six oh two. Primary and Elections, fifteen thousand, sixty-three. Registration, five thousand, two. Conservation Commission, ten thousand. Planning Board, forty-six thousand, seven twenty-five. Zoning Appeal Board, two thousand, seven hundred. Soil Board, one thousand, fifty-three. Public Buildings and Property Management, sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten. Uh, Property Insurance, one hundred and two thousand, three fifty. Town Reports, three thousand, five hundred. For total government, general government of one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, four forty-five. Police, one million, six seventy-four, eight sixty-four. Communications, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five fifty-three. Fire, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, three ninety-two. Building, ninety-one thousand, nine fifty-five.
Hold.
Gas, eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Plumbing, five thousand, nine hundred and thirty. Weights and Measures, four thousand.
Hold.
Electrical, thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty.
Hold.
Civil Defense, EMA, twenty-two thousand, six hundred. Animal Control Officer, thirty-five thousand, six thirty-two. Forestry, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Arbor Master, one hundred dollars. Total Public Safety, three million, one hundred and nine thousand, three oh six. School Committee, Stipends, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four. Free Town Lego Regional School District, nine million, nine, uh, two hundred eighty-two thousand, nine forty-six.
Hold.
Um, nine forty-eight, sorry.
Hold.
Okay, Crystal County Agricultural, thirty thousand, nine oh six. Oak Colony Vocational School, one million, five hundred eighty-one thousand, five forty-nine. Uh, Highways, our total education, ten million, eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight twenty-seven. Highways and Streets, three hundred eighty-eight thousand, four ninety-five. Snow and Ice Road, one hundred thousand. Street Lighting, eleven thousand. Drafts Collection and Disposal, four hundred and three thousand, six fifty. Transfer Station, one hundred forty thousand, five oh eight. I'm sorry, five oh one. One hundred forty thousand, five oh one. Cemetery, eleven thousand, three fifty. Total Public Works and Facilities, one million, fifty-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-six. Health Inspection Services, seventy-eight thousand, four hundred seventeen.
Hold.
Council on Aging, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine fifty-five. Veteran Services, one hundred thirty-three thousand, two fifty. Memorial and Veterans Day, two thousand, two hundred. Library, one hundred and ten thousand, eight seventy-one. Jane White Library, five thousand, two hundred thirty-five. Arts Cultural Council, two hundred dollars. Historical Commission, five hundred dollars. Total Cultural Recovery, Recreation, one hundred sixteen thousand, eight oh six. Retirement of Debt, five hundred...
Where are the other, Mr. Moderator? Would you go back to the top of that page, six, and give the total of the public services, please?
Correct. Human Services is three hundred forty-two thousand, eight twenty-two. Okay, Retirement of Debt, five hundred and eighty-five thousand. Interest on Long-Term Debt, one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty. Total Debt Service, seven hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty. Other Asset and Charges, one hundred, one thousand, four sixty-nine. Total Intergovernmental Expenditures, one thousand, four sixty-nine. Retirement and Penalties Contributions, eight hundred and twelve thousand, two forty-seven. Workers' Compensation, forty-five thousand, five thirty-nine. Unemployment Compensation, thirty thousand. Health Insurance, one million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred.
Two sixty-two.
Health Insurance, one million, two sixty-two thousand, four hundred. Life Insurance, eight hundred. Medicare, fifty thousand. Capital Equipment Budget, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, five fifty-seven. Capital Building Improvement Budget, sixty-five thousand, three ninety-five. Court Judgments, two hundred thousand dollars. Liability Assurance, forty-three thousand, six hundred forty. Total Gasoline and Diesel Fuel, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Total Unclassified, two million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, five seventy-eight. For total Town financial deposit, of twenty million, two thirty, sixty-two, four ninety-nine. But this, uh, correct.
Move to adopt all articles, all lines not placed on hold.
Second.
Motion made, seconded that we adopt all line items that are not on hold. On the question? All in favor? You have one question? Yeah, great.
Sorry, uh, Michael Q. Mason, just on the page six at the top, uh, for clarification. Normally, the library department is voted one budget and then is divided between the two buildings. On here, the two buildings are being separated into separate budgets, uh, which is clarification as to why they're not done. It should be one total library budget, library fifty-five. And that we would divide it between the buildings when we do the lineups.
Michael, that's how the new economy system is all set up. It specifies each one individually.
I guess.
Just for expenses.
Okay, that's not gonna...
That's how it was done last year.
Right, but last year, you could move the money back and forth between the two buildings. This year, you wouldn't be able to do that.
I did do it this year.
Okay.
Okay, is there any else on the discussion? Every none, we will rule the articles, uh, that are not on hold. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Let's go back to the articles on hold. Uh, Department Number One Twenty-Five, Town Administration.
Make a motion to amend that amount to one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirteen thousand, uh, six hundred and thirteen dollars.
Want to say that again, please?
One oh three, six thirteen.
One oh three, six thirteen. Okay, motion made and seconded to amend, uh, Town Administrator, to one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and thirteen. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. The next article would be Town Clerk.
Um, when this was figured out, there is an article on there that's going to be Article Three to do with longevity. If that is approved, it won't be in the budget. And there was also an additional sixty-five dollars because of union negotiations that should have been put in there and was not put in there. So the difference is three hundred forty dollars that it should be more. So I am asking for a, if I could have a motion from the floor to approve that article in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, that line, I'm sorry, in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, nine sixty-eight. If Article Three is not approved, then that money would sit there and just go back into the general fund.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Town Clerk Personnel Line at the number requested by the Town Clerk.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded to adopt the Town Clerk with eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All, all opposed?
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Town Clerk budget as amended.
Okay, motion made, seconded to adopt the Town Clerk's line item as amended. On the question?
What's the total number, Mr. Moderator?
Eighty-eight thousand, nine sixty-eight.
No, no, but I don't know.
All. Oh, with the three, so we're gonna leave the, uh...
Ninety-two thousand, seven eighty-eight.
Ninety-two thousand, seven eighty-eight.
Thank you.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. The next hall would be Building.
Make a motion to amend that article, um, in the personnel expense to one oh four, eight sixteen. One oh four, eight sixteen.
It's personnel?
Under the personnel.
Okay, under the personnel, it's, uh, Building. Motion is to amend that eighty-four thousand, eight sixteen to one hundred and four, eight sixteen.
One hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase.
The twenty thousand dollar increase is because our building inspector is now leaving and it will give us a little more leeway in getting, um, a suitable replacement.
Do I hear a, is there a motion? There's no motion on that. Is there a motion on that?
Move, move the correction made, not approved.
Is there a second? The motion made, seconded that we adopt personnel expenses of one hundred and four thousand, eight sixteen. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All in favor, please raise your hand, we have papers.
All in favor?
All in favor? The motion died, it was only, like, I didn't really care if you went down to the not, I was gonna go ahead. Motion is approved, and I believe that new number will be one hundred and eleven thousand, nine fifty-five.
So voted.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded to change Article, uh, Building to one hundred and eleven thousand, nine fifty-five. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Okay, the next hall was Weights and Measures, four thousand dollars.
Um, move to adopt the four thousand dollars.
Okay, motion made, seconded to adopt Weights and Measures with four thousand dollars. On the question?
Uh, just something that I wanted to find out. I know there's no time to change that this year, and that's why the four thousand should stand, but Bert Lady Layfield have both partnered with Taunton. They're doing their Weights and Measures to Taunton's office, they're both paying less than two thousand dollars a year to do that. So I think it would just be wise if this town looked at Taunton and were able to do it for less than half of what we're paying this town.
Thank you, Ron.
Yes, there is none on the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Weights and Measures will stand at four thousand dollars, all approved. Okay, the next one is the Electrical. We have a hold on the Electrical.
Davis Teen Thirty-Eight North Ministry. Just curious why I went from four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty.
Mary?
What's that?
The simple answer, I would, I would adhere to the building commissioner, but the simple answer is, is that that was woefully underfunded, and there are significantly more permits that have to be met right now. So that's why. I guess they always went in for transfers, so instead of doing that, we're trying to, um, fund all these budgets at what they should be, instead of always going back to the reserve fund.
So what you're telling us is, with the increased demand for services, the permit should eventually cover this cost.
At some point, we've also asked, um, to look at our permitting fees to ensure that that is happening, and that will happen.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Did you all get that answer?
Move to adopt is presented.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to adopt it as written with three thirteen thousand, six hundred and eighty. On the question? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. The next hold I have is Free Town Lakeville Regional School District.
No, help.
Help?
School district.
The school district, correct?
Three oh one.
Sorry.
I got the school.
You do. You do.
Okay.
I'm going backwards.
Okay. Okay, who put that on hold? The question? Okay.
Just to re-go over the figures this weekend, I noticed that the Commonwealth, right now, it's gonna be, their anticipated contribution to the Free Town Lakeville School District for transportation has gone from the figure we were using of nine hundred and sixty-four thousand to one million, three eighty-four. Consequently, our share has dropped. We originally estimated three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six eighty-eight. With the increase from the state, our share goes down to two hundred and one thousand, sixty-three dollars. And this does not impact the school children at all, because each town has to pay their share of the transportation cost as well as the debt. So I would recommend that we change our figure, our total figure for Free Town Lakeville, to nine million, one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that would be a reduction of one hundred and seventy-three thousand, six twenty-five, which is our share, which is a reduction in our share of the transportation costs.
So it's nine million, one hundred and eight, no, nine million, one hundred and nine thousand, three twenty-three.
Correct.
This is the total number?
Yes, the total number for Free Town Lakeville Regional School District.
Can we have that number again, please?
Nine million, one hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-three. But do I have a motion?
What does that impact? That impacts the assessment number?
That impacts...
Not the assessment, but the debt number?
The transportation cost.
Which is part of assessment?
Yes.
That's part of the assessment.
Thank you.
Should it be the moderator?
Yes.
Okay. This is anticipated. This does not mean that this will come through fruition, okay? This is, if it doesn't come at the ninety percent reimbursement, we will be back here at a special town meeting called "Just For This." Because, because, because we have to meet this obligation. This is a mandate. Transportation is mandated, okay? So we're going from an anticipated revenue. We've never seen, in the years that I've been on school committee, in the years that I've been on the select board, I've never seen ninety percent reimbursement.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, nine million, one hundred and nine thousand, three twenty-three, is that the...
This here is what was on the Department of Revenue's website over the weekend, and this is the same action that the town of Lakeville took. They did the same thing at their town meeting last Monday night. And certainly, if the transportation money that comes in from the state does not meet that amount, we will make it up to the school district. And we don't have to go back to a special town meeting, because we always have a special town meeting in October, and they're not gonna, they're not gonna need that money until, before October. So certainly, we would make it up, because it's our obligation. But right now, that's the way it stands. Lakeville took the same action last Monday night.
Move to a second.
I have a question. What happens if the money stays there? Like, is there any harm in keeping it where it is, because we know how the state budget goes?
We won't get it.
Mr. Moderator.
Please use the mic.
So in other words, it's gonna save the school.
Good question. The answer to that is we won't get it. Okay, so that nine million, one hundred and nine, three twenty-three is a toll, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But I hear a motion, and seconded to adopt that as a toll.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded to adopt the sum of nine million, one hundred and nine thousand, three twenty-three for Free Town Lakeville Regional School. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted.
No.
All opposed? All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Health Inspection Services, that's the next one that was on hold. Please come to the mic if you want to speak. I'll wait here.
This is quite water, I think we voted to amend it, not the actual motion.
That motion was, that motion was to do the whole Free Town Lakeville, the bottom line, nine, instead of nine million, two eighty-two, nine forty-eight, the motion was to adopt it at nine million, one oh nine, three twenty-three. Okay, Health Inspection Services, there was a hold on that.
Yes, I'd like to amend that article to read under personnel expenses, seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay, there is no motion on that, so that would be the motion.
I'll make that as a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded to fund Health Inspection at seventy-nine thousand, four forty-six. On the question?
Aye. Can you just explain it?
For the same reasons that I stated before, our building inspector is leaving, and now our health inspector is leaving to another community for more money and less work. So in order for us to attract good people to this area, and to do what we said we were gonna do at our special town meeting, we need to increase that budget. It's not saying that we're gonna spend all that amount, but we need to start attracting qualified, good people to the town of Free Town.
Bear with me a second. That seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-six is for the personnel expenses only. We have to add the eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one to it, which gives us a total Eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventeen. Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. I don't believe that. That was it. Okay, that covers, we need a motion for... Okay. Article Two. To save the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Chapter Forty-One, Section One oh eight of the general law as amended for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, and undertake any action relative thereto. Figures indicate annual salaries are hourly pay rates. Moderator, four hundred and finance, I wanna read the Finance Committee recommendation, because as I mentioned earlier, you have the Finance Committee and the Select Board saying. So moderator, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Board of Selectmen each, six thousand dollars. Town Clerk, forty-nine thousand, seventy-four. Order assesses each, four thousand, one ninety-two. Tree Warden, twenty dollars and eighteen cents. Highway Surveyor, sixty-one thousand, two sixty-six. Regional School, Regional District School Committee each, one thousand, one hundred and six dollars submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requiring a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommends.
Do I hear a motion? What's up?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town Clerk and Highway Surveyor be accepted at the requested amounts, and all other lines be accepted at the recommended amounts.
Say that again.
That the Town Clerk and Highway Surveyor be adopted at the requested amounts, that the other departments be adopted at the recommended amounts.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Moderator, in this particular case, because of how we voted on Article One for the Town Clerk's budget, her amount is gonna have to be forty-nine thousand, one ninety-five. That was her request.
That's, I think, was his motion.
Well, he's also adding the Highway Surveyor, but the Highway Surveyor, that was not, that amount was not voted in his budget.
the Highway Surveyor was not, so it's not funded at this particular time, correct? We'll handle this just as we did Article One, the omnibus budget, and if you don't mind, we send in that motion, and then what we'll do is we'll make a motion to accept all the ones except for the Town Clerk and the Highway Surveyor. Would you do that?
Yes, I'll make that one.
A motion made, and seconded that we accept all of these salary, hourly pay rates, except the Town Clerk and the Highway Surveyor at this time? Is there any question on that?
At the front, at the recommended...
You're using the recommended clause?
Yes, for those, correct. And then, just a clarification, we're gonna go right back and do the Town Clerk and the Highway Surveyor. Okay, is there anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Now let's take the Town Clerk. All right, Town Clerk is gonna be now recommended at the recommended rate.
Forty-nine, one ninety-five.
The forty-nine, one ninety-five, so I need a motion?
So move. Second.
A motion made, and seconded to fund the Town Clerk with a number of forty-nine thousand, one ninety-five. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the Highway Surveyor. Do I hear a motion on that?
And all the Highway Surveyors' quest amount of sixty-two thousand, nineteen be approved. Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded, that the Highway Surveyor be approved at sixty-two thousand, nineteen. Okay, Board of Selectmen? You have a comment?
We've already set our recommendations, so I have nothing to say further on this one.
Okay, if this is, if this is voted, and the sixty-two thousand, yeah, I'm gonna have Town Council, but the sixty-two thousand is not funded, the sixty-one thousand, I'll let Town Council explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for your brief explanation. In the omnibus budget, and you saw that we moved money around for the Town Clerk, but a similar, a hold was not placed on the Highway Surveyor, so the Highway Surveyor was funded at the recommended amount, not at this extra amount. So if we vote to set the salary at the requested amount, as opposed to the recommended amount, you will have funded it at an amount higher than what you, you'll have approved it at an amount higher than what you funded. So you'll have, you will have approved a salary higher than the amount of money you have to pay that salary.
Is there money available in the, in available funds to cover it?
Well, just before that's even answered, you, at this point, they didn't, we would have to go back to the budget. We, this is not a funding article, this is simply setting the salary. The way the Massachusetts law works, you have to, town meeting actually has to set the salary for elected officials. So setting the salary is not the same as funding the salary. So here, we would be setting it, but we can't fund it through this article. We have to go back to the budget and reopen that line item in the budget to fund it, if there is funding available. But that requires to go back to Article One. We can't do it with this article.
My question stands. Is the money available?
Yes, money's available.
Money's there.
We have to move back to Article One.
You understand that this does not fund it, this just sets a salary.
So then you need a motion to go, to reopen Article One?
We, well, I would say we consider the Highway Surveyor, I would, you know, we'd vote on this either up or down, and then a motion to reconsider the Highway Department under Article One would be in order. And then, I think we'll be okay here. Okay, so that being said, is there anything else on the question of this Highway Surveyor's salary? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now let's have a count, okay? All in favor, please raise your... Where's my comments?
Which amount are we voting on?
Well, we're voting on sixty, sixty-two thousand, nineteen. That's what the motion is on the trigger. Highway Surveyor, I'm sorry. So all in favor?
Sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollar increases, is that what you're saying? About eight hundred dollar increases, is it not?
We have to go back to...
Seven hundred and fifty-three dollar increase.
Right, so we have to go back if this motion is passed. Sounds like more people said no than showing their blue. Okay, the motion carries, so that, that number is, the salary is set at sixty-two thousand, nineteen. Now, that being said, we need to have a motion to reconsider the Highway Surveyor's line item on Article One.
So move.
A motion made, and seconded that we, that reconsider, reconsider Article One, the Highway Surveyor.
What line number is that? What is four twenty?
Okay, it says four twenty, I think it's worth four. Okay, all right, this is, this is the move for reconsideration only. Nothing about funding it, this particular... Say again? Who made that motion? Show your board on the prevailing side.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're going to go back to Article One. Okay, I need a motion to change the personnel expenses.
Mrs. Moderator, I move that the Highway Department Personnel Expense be funded in the amount of three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and three dollars.
Okay, motion made, and seconded that the Highway Department Personal Expenses be funded at three hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and three. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. That'll be changed.
Moderator, do we have a tone now on total highways and streets?
Total highways and streets? I got three eighty-nine, two forty-eight.
Three eighty-nine, two forty-eight? That would make the total of the highway of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
So move.
You don't have to do that. Okay. So, we're all set about it. So, we're all set about it. Okay, Article 3. To see if the town will vote to fix and compensate the wall of elected officials of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of General laws and amended for the fiscal years 2015 by providing longevity payment as follows. After five years of service, five hundred dollars. After ten years of service, six hundred dollars. After fifteen years of service, seven hundred dollars. After twenty years of service, eight hundred dollars. After twenty-five years of service, nine hundred dollars. And or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote.
Any questions to pass over?
Second. Second.
You want to pass it? The motion made is seconded to pass this article over. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass over Article 13. Article 3, I'm sorry.
Did we fund this article already? In the town clerk's budget?
No.
But, um...
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't, there's an existing article.
Did we go back and fund the town clerk's article?
Hang on. this article would pass. It did not, it passed over, so that money will remain in her budget and go back to the general fund at the end of the year, correct?
You know, the purpose of the article that is submitted, we have a couple of elected officials that work full-time, forty hours a week, and they're covered under longevity, but their longevity amount hasn't increased in a number of years. However, the problem is, and as our attorney has pointed out, if we pass this article here, there seems to be no mechanism to adjust the longevity for the full-time elected officials because all elected officials are not full-time. But, they would be entitled to this, so a selectman could be entitled, they don't work full-time. Somebody that's elected to a position that doesn't get funded could be entitled to longevity. It's not right, and that's why we passed over this.
I would just like to address the Board of Selectmen and ask them if anyone would be willing to make a motion that this would just cover two positions, the two positions that are on the full-time, stating the town clerk and the highway surveyor. In talking to Town Council, asked after we reviewed this, there is no such thing as a full-time elected official. Elected officials are elected officials, there's no such thing as a full-time elected official or a part-time elected official. So, that's why this is not clarified in that way. So, Mr. Ashley, John Ashley, for his ye of disservice, had he have been here, he probably would have been at the twenty-five-year mark. Mr. Wilbur would be at the six-hundred mark. So, every... At this point, this article, every elected official is entitled to it. But you could just state the two positions, that's what I'm stating.
Okay, well, first of all, the motion has been passed to pass over this, so if anyone wants to reconsider that and...
I'll vote to reconsider Article 3.
Somebody can go second. Okay, Article 4. To see if the town will vote to amend Article 10 of the Breakdown Bylaws, Personnel, Classification and Compensation Plan, Section 10.6J by deleting the following table listing longevity payment amounts contained therein. After five years of service, five hundred. After ten years of service, three fifty. After fifteen years of service, four twenty-five. After twenty years of service, five hundred. After twenty-five years of service, six hundred. And inserting in place thereof the following revised table. After five years, five hundred. After ten years of service, six hundred. After fifteen years of service, seven hundred. After twenty years of service, eight hundred. After twenty-five years of service, nine hundred. And take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 4. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 4 is adopted. Article 5. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of four hundred and fifty-five dollars to pay for insect pest control and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 5 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 5 is adopted. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of two thousand dollars for the purpose of supporting a sexual assault domestic violence program of the Devastated Women Center Inc. and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 6 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So vote no. Article 7. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of three thousand dollars for the purchase of fireworks and fireworks for the annual Independence Day celebration and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the brave fireworks requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 7. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 7 is adopted. Article 8. To see if the town will vote to... Will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E12 to establish a revolving account into which shall be deposited fees for the sale of advertising space on the back cover of future annual town reports, such funds being received from businesses wishing to advertise, to be used to offset the cost of propelling and printing the annual town reports, to be expended by the Board of Selectmen in the amount not to exceed three thousand dollars and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 8 is read. On the question? Please come to the mic, please.
Hello, how will you determine which businesses...
Please say your name.
...Julie Chatten? How will you determine which businesses will be afforded to advertise on the back of the annual report? And who will make that determination?
All of those businesses come forward to the town administrator, he'll review them and make their recommendation at that time.
And what if you have more than three thousand dollars in businesses that would like to advertise on the annual report?
They can donate to...
Yeah, you can all go and donate to parade and fireworks.
No, because they're specifically making a donation for advertising space. So, how do you create parity and then come close to that?
Agreed, Mr. Moderator. This is a revolving fund for this purpose, and the statute, there has to be a set revolving fund dollar amount, a maximum amount, has to be established, Board of Selectmen establish that amount based upon what they estimate will come in. If more money comes in, this number could be adjusted at the special town meeting.
We've not even come close to that amount any years prior.
But I'm sure, based on the earlier conversations, we will have many interested businesses that would love to donate more than three thousand if necessary to get premium advertising space. So, my point is, is this really a prudent use of our annual report?
I think this is the way we want to go, and if we do have extra money, we can always come back in the fall and amend this in that way.
One eleven?
I just think it should be... The town should be unbiased and present the annual report in a way that's not showing any type of, you know, financial backing by one for-profit or nonprofit entity or another per se. The budget should stand on its own and afford for the printing, or we could use the internet.
No, it's not the budget, it's just...
Right, so the printing costs.
For advertising, right. So, we can take that money and offset the cost of what the annual town report.
And should the budget cover that? And be unbiased to all businesses and nonprofits that are located within the community.
It's not really a biased decision, whoever donates money, they're...
Get advertising.
Is there anything else on discussion?
Mr. Moderator, we all got a copy of the annual report when locked in the room. If you look at page 158, there are five businesses. Doesn't look like people are beating down the doors, running over three thousand dollars to do this. Let's appreciate the people that have saved us tax money and discuss the article.
Amen.
Here's any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Article 8 is adopted. Article 9. To see if the town will vote to authorize pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E12, the establishment of a revolving fund for the Recreation Committee into which will be deposited receipts from the long-farm vote ramp fees from which costs not to exceed the sum of five thousand dollars may be expended without further appropriation for operation and maintenance of the vote ramp by the Recreation Committee and Board of Selectmen and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Parks Recreation Committee requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 9 is read. On the question?
Jeanne Fox, Ellen Jeffrey Lane, I would just like clarification, I did not think we had a Parks and Recreation Committee anymore. We should probably just vote through the board.
You're correct, but it's still, that line item has not changed.
Oh, we didn't change the line, so we still reading it, but we don't have that committee anymore.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything else on discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 9 is adopted. Article 10. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of thirty thousand dollars to fund fiscal year fourteen, fiscal year sixteen recertification of values program and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Assessors requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 10. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 10 is adopted.
Mr. Moderator, if we could just remind the folks in the audience that all the funding sources are coming from taxation?
Okay, just remind you that all funds are coming from taxation.
Thank you.
Article 11. To see if the town will vote to re-authorize pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E1 half, a revolving fund for the Communication Department into which will be deposited receipts for residential and commercial burglar and fire alarm fees from which costs not to exceed the sum of two thousand dollars may be expended without further appropriation for phone lines, postage, and other related costs by the Board of Selectmen and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Chief of Police requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 11 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 11 is adopted. Article 12. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of nine thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the purpose of installation of radio equipment together with related expenses to serve the needs of the fire and police departments and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the fire and police chief requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 12 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 12 is adopted. Article 13. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of four hundred dollars representing the town chair of a female assistant to firefight his brand to purchase an air still in the bill station for the fire department and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the fire chief requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 13. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 13 is adopted. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate annual transfer from available funds a sum of thirteen thousand one hundred dollars to purchase radio pages and charges for the fire department and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the fire chief requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Vote to adopt, the article is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 14 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 14 is adopted. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase gift or eminent domain permanent and/or temporary easements in or and under a portion, or portions of the parcels of land in Bunny South Main Street identified by assessment map two thirty-three as possible, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty point zero three for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Creighton, including without limitation for access, utility, grading, and/or related purposes and or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Vote to adopt, the article is read.
Motion made is seconded to adopt Article 15 is read. On the question?
Could you please clarify, Jeanne Fox, Ellen Jeffrey Lane, could you please clarify what these properties are? I understood it was a house that someone wanted to sell and with this, this passage will not be able to?
These are three properties along South Main Street in order to make roadway improvements near the Stop and Shop site. These are necessary for that. Also, we're gonna be adding a sewer line in there as well, so we'll be able to extend the sewer line down South Main Street. So, this is very vital to that accomplishment.
Is there anything else on the question? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Article 15 is adopted. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to step as a town wave, the roadway entitled Halo Way in its entirety for the length of five hundred and five point three eight feet and heretofore laid out by the Board of Selectmen and shown on plan entitled Streets of the Flame dated ten one thirteen prepared by SciTech Civil and Environmental Engineering Land Use Planning on file with the town clerk and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire on behalf of the town by gift, purchase, or eminent domain fee to and/or easements in said Halo Way for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Creighton and any drainage utility access and/or other easements relative thereto or take any action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
No recommendation.
Vote to adopt, is read.
Okay, motion made is seconded to adopt Article 16 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 16 is adopted and read. Article 17. To see if the town will vote to install and fund a streetlight at the corner of Chipaway Road and Bullet Row and or take any action relative thereto submitted by petition requires a majority vote. Board of Selectmen?
Motion to pass over?
Motion made is seconded to pass over Article 17. On the question? All in favor?
We've not had the Finance Committee recommendation yet.
Finance Committee recommendation?
No recommendation.
Oh, well, yeah, we tend to have no financial, but... Yeah, there's kind of need to have no financial, but anyways. Anything else on the question, on discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 17 is passed over. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Freetown zoning map by changing the zoning classification of assessment map 206 plot 17.01. The land being shown has lot B containing 70,000 square feet, 1.61 acres, is shown on a plan of land entitled Plan Prepared for Simmons Family of LaSona LLC and Francis and Lorraine Barbosa by S. Roy Land Surveying and Associates. Last revision date, October 2nd, 2007, recorded in Bristol County Fall River Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 1444, page 41, for residential use to general use, undertake any action relative thereto. The proposed zoning map on file for public viewing at the office of the town clerk, Freetown Town Hall, 3 Main Street and Southern Avenue. Submitted by petition requires a two-thirds vote. Finance, uh, board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
No recommendation.
Motion to table.
Motion made and seconded to table. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion 18 is table. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Freetown's effect of bylaws, Article 11 zoning bylaws by deleting Section 11.11 in its entirety and inserting place thereof the amended Section 11.11, floodplain overlay district bylaw, and further to amend the zoning map to include the floodplain overlay district. Such amendments are on file in the office of the town clerk, and undertake any action relative thereto submitted by the building commission, zoning enforcement office, and planning board. Requires a two-thirds vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
No recommendation.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 19 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 19 is adopted and read. A two-thirds, uh, two-thirds vote, a majority vote, you'd answer. Article 20, to see if the town will vote in accordance with general laws, Chapter 115, Section 9, to raise an appropriate and transfer from available funds to sum of $300 for the maintenance of veterans' graves in abandoned and neglected cemetery, and undertake any action relative thereto submitted by the cemetery commission requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommends.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 20 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Moderator, if you could just announce to the meeting that under Article 19, a report of the planning board was received?
Article 19, a report of the planning board was received.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
It on file with the town clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Article 21, to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to initiate the development of a municipal electricity aggregation program pursuant to general laws, Chapter 164, 134, and any other enabling authority, including development of a plan detailing the process and consequences of municipal electricity aggregation, and to take all actions necessary to implement and administer such a program independently and in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right of individual residents and businesses to opt out of the aggregation and/or undertake any action relative thereto submitted by the town administrator requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
No recommendation.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 21 is read. On the question?
James Dean, 38 North Main Street, are we saying that the town is heading towards having a municipal electrical utility and putting the town's electric demands out for general bid?
No, but I will let the town administrator speak to this.
The town will not be developing its own utility, but the second part of your question was correct, that for residential and small businesses, we would be aggregating the load and putting it out for competitive bid. If the individual homeowner or small business does not want to participate, they can opt out and maintain service with their presence supplier.
How does this also possibly tie in with the, uh, amount of solar power that's being generated in this community?
It really doesn't tie into solar power, except that as solar generators are selling back into the grid, it could ultimately drive down the fossil electricity overall.
Is there anything else on the question? Mary?
Phil, Cissy, Piddle Bar Road, how are we going to, who is responsible for the financial cost of figuring this out and running it?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the full question.
Why don't we repeat that?
I guess my question is, if we're voting to buy power as a group, because this is what we're doing, who is going to advance to this as far as running it and the cost to the town for doing it?
There are brokers who are in the business of aggregating and putting this out to bid. They do that at no cost to us. And the individual homeowner or small business is responsible for paying their own bill.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything else on discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 21 is adopted. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to petition the general court for special legislation subsequently as follows, provided however that the general court may make clerical or editorial changes to form, affirm any, affirm only to the bill unless the board's selectmen approves amendments thereto before enacted by the general court, which amendments shall be within the public purposes of said petition. An act authorizes the town of Freetown to pay certain unpaid bills, being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled by the authority of the same as well. Section 1, the treasurer of the town of Freetown may pay some appropriated and unpaid bill incurred by the town in the amount of $59,000, which is legally unenforceable against the town, to Architectural Consulting Group LLC for consulting services provided to the town in connection with a planning study with respect to the rehabilitation, reuse, and consolidation and reconstruction of certain town-owned buildings, notwithstanding the failure of the town to comply with the laws relative to procurement and competitive bidding in the awarding of the contract. Section 2, this act shall affect upon its passage, and undertake any action relative thereto submitted by the town administrator requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Board of selectmen recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommends.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 22 is read. On the question?
James Dean, 38 North Main Street, refresh my memory, about a year or so ago, did we specifically set aside funds for a purpose such as this? So why are we being faced with this now?
Mr. Moderator?
It's a little bit of a confusing situation. This has nothing to do with the funding. This is an authorization. Mass General Laws has a number of different procurement statutes that overlap. This had to do with whether, in fact, the engineering work constituted a feasibility study subject to certain bidding requirements or not. In discussions with the state's attorney general's office and inspector general's office, there was a concern that this matter would, in fact, constitute a feasibility study subject to a different procurement process than was undertaken by the town. However, the town, in moving the project forward, had already obtained the services of this firm. The problem is, based upon the opinion from the inspector general, we wouldn't be able to pay them because the statutory mechanism we use differed from what they felt we should use. So this special act would simply allow us to pay for services that have already been rendered. There's no additional funding. This is not a cost to the town. This just lets us pay a bill.
So something went out, not through a bid process, by error or whatever, so now the bill has to be paid?
Right, essentially. It's just because many engineering services are exempt from bidding, this one crossed over into a feasibility study with respect to a building, and because of that extra service, there was an opinion from the state that it should have been a different process than what was used. So this will allow us to pay it.
Thank you.
Mary Brown, 23, South Main Street, could the selectmen tell us what the status is of the feasibility study today?
It is done, and we're reviewing everything right now, and hopefully we'll have something before the voters in, during the fall.
It's completed?
Yeah, I just got a disc not too long ago, so I just wanted to look over the disc. I haven't had a chance, an opportunity. We're trying to get ready for town meeting. Once we look it over, once the board looks it over, we'll probably call a department head meeting, and believe me, you will be there. I know, I promise. So that way we can have everybody around the table and see things together. You don't have to remind me, I know already.
Well, the problem is that a year ago, we were spoken to that it would be addressed with the commission, and we get heard nothing to date, so that's why we're asking what the status is. And if it's completed, then I don't think they gathered all the information from all the necessary reports.
Although this doesn't have anything pertaining to the article itself, I hear exactly what you're saying, and like I said, I haven't had time to review it. So once I do, I promise I'll get back to you.
Just a quick follow-up to the earlier question, just to be clear. There was a competitive process that was undertaken, it's just that it didn't follow what's known as the design of selection process, it followed a more general bid process. That's the difference between the two procedures.
Is there any more discussion on Article 22? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 22 is adopted. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and transfer from available funds a sum of $40,000 for the removal of debt and hazardous trees, and to pay wages and other activities associated with it, and undertake any action relative thereto submitted by the tree ward requires a majority vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommends.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 23 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 23 is adopted and read.
Move to waive the reading of Article 24.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of Article 24. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. I'll read just Article 24, the first section. To see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and transfer from available funds a sum of money to operate the water enterprise fund, and undertake any action relative thereto, so forth and so on, as the previous motion. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommends.
Motion to adopt is presented.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 24 as read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article 24 is adopted.
Move to waive the reading of Article 25.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of Article 25. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and transfer from available funds a sum of money to operate the sewer enterprise fund, and undertake any action relative thereto, so forth and so on, as the previous motion. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommends.
Motion to adopt is presented.
Motion made and accepted to accept, motion made and seconded to accept Article 25 is read. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. Article 26. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate and transfer from available funds a sum of money to be deposited as a stabilization fund, and undertake any action relative thereto, I believe a number.
$400,000. $400,000.
That sum is $400,000, submitted by the board of selectmen, requires a two-thirds vote. Board of selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance committee?
Recommends.
Move to adopt in the amount of $400,000.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt Article 26 in the amount of $400,000. On the question?
Just a question. Is this rain aid fund in addition to the rain we just voted on express economy? It's not that meteorological, but that's a lot of rain.
Is there any else on the discussion?
Somewhere around 2.
2 million?
Somewhere around 2 million. Okay, is there anything else on discussion with Article 26?
I would ask that we count that figure by next town meeting, by next one.
It's about 2 million, maybe a little bit more than that, but not much more than that.
Mr. Moderator, just to the meeting, just remember, the stabilization fund is fully under the control of the town meeting, so it cannot be expended unless town meeting votes at a future town meeting by a two-thirds vote. So you maintain control of that money.
Does the state have any specifications, how much should be in?
Wait. Is there any limit the state puts on that stabilization fund?
It's not, Mr. Moderator, it's not so much a recommendation of the state, it's a recommendation of the town's auditors. The more you keep in that fund, it just signifies the financial security and stability of the town, gets you a better bond rating.
You also have to, sorry, you also have to remember, we just spent money to do this feasibility study, and when we come back in the fall, we're hoping to make recommendations about what our infrastructure has to, you know, be done, what has to be done to our town buildings. So the board has a plan. It's not like we're going to just hide all this money and keep it there forever. So we're going to come to you in the fall with a plan, and hopefully everybody will be on board with that.
If you have any more questions, I'm going to have to record quietly to come to the mic, please. Okay, Article 26, is there any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Article 26 is adopted. Okay, I'm going to, particular article requires a two-thirds vote, and I'm going to declare a two-thirds vote.
My name is Lorraine Barbosa, 75 and off means to LaSona, and I was just wondering why Article 18 was taken? I had no idea I needed to go to the article.
Came from the board, so I think you made a motion.
I made the motion, but I thought discussing a motion to table was out of order.
It is. Well, I mean, she does have a question, but I'm not going to tell her that way to go sit down, so.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
It's our article, so if we could give her an explanation, I don't know why, you know. Was there a reason?
I made the motion to table based on I understood that the zoning board appeals rejected a variance in this property, and that I know some of the neighbors of the property are close to the project.
Okay, that's all we can offer at this time.
I didn't mind answering, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, you know, she came before we closed the meeting and asked a question, and I want that for her.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted.